I'm trying to turn it off, y'all. Geez, I thought it was me.
Okay, the time is now 6:00 PM, so I will call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the official meeting of the ACBOE. We're glad that you are here and thank you for taking the time to be invested community members in your school system. We will begin with the roll call. Please note all board members are present. Kim Crockett, Billy Holland, Dr. Stritchett, Jamie Jackson, Kyle Glover. Okay, I would like to ask Mr. Glover if he would lead us in tonight's invocation, so everyone please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Please pray with me. Lord, thank you for this day, thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together and do the business of our school board. Lord, I know that is a good thing in your sight, pouring into the lives of our children here in Otaga County, Lord, and I am humbled to have this opportunity and I thank you for that. Thank you for the citizens that come and participate in this meeting, Lord. We ask that your will be done here tonight and we know that everything is not easy. You didn't promise that, but you did promise that you would take care of it all in the end. Lord, we ask you to please continue to love God and protect us. We ask this in your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board members, you have, oh wait, no, we're gonna, sorry, we're gonna do this. Board members, you've received tonight's agenda in your board packet, so can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
My second.
Okay, is there any discussion about the agenda? Okay, all in favor to approve tonight's agenda, please raise your right hand. Okay, the agenda has now been approved. I will now turn it over to Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon to all of you. First on the agenda, we have a special presentation from, which will be presented by two very bright young men. They're with the Otaga County Technology Center Robotics Presentation, but before they present, I would like to ask Mr. Cooper, the teacher, their instructor, to come up. A little bit about Mr. Cooper. Mr. Cooper joined Otaga County back in 2012. He became a career tech teacher in 2016 and he also is the head archery coach for Prattville High School. Mr. Cooper?
He's our Teacher of the Year also. Otaga County Teacher of the Year.
It wasn't part and parcel, congratulations, Mr. Cooper.
That's, I'm that because of them. So, my name's Sean Cooper. I'm the engineering and robotics teacher at Otaga County Technology Center. I brought with me James Byard and Elias Wilkerson. They are members of our robotics team and they brought a project. And Dr. Boyd came by the classroom the other day and I was just showing him a little bit about what we do and because of his past in being an engineering instructor as well, he kinda, he was like, "Oh, that's pretty neat. Why don't y'all come present that?" And so I said, "Well, technically the project's not due until the day after, so let me make sure they're gonna have it done." But I picked two students that I knew were gonna have it done. So, a little bit about the project, if y'all wanna, this is, if y'all wanna take one, I'd hand them out, but that's my, I came to teaching late in life and kinda my downfall is I hate passing out papers. It doesn't ever work for me, so. But what I'm passing out's the design brief and again, the rubric that we use to grade this project with. So, the idea is that they're, the National Parks Association is looking for a way to sort recyclable materials that people just come and dump, throw away, whatever. So, they're tasked with building a machine that will automatically sort different types of materials. We chose plastics, metal and wood. So, basically, I'll let them talk about how they did it, but that's, if y'all see the design brief, that's kinda all of the instructions they're given. There's a few other things about limitations of what they can use and what they can't use, but that came up, like I said, this is normally one of the hardest projects I give, normally give students about two weeks to complete it and I think they were done in four days. So, that tells you a little bit about the quality of these two students. So, I'll turn it over to y'all and if y'all want to explain.
The thing, um, so the way this works, it has a VEX optical sensor which judges the reflectivity of the marbles or whatever you put in front of it. So, for example, you know, metal's really shiny, it'll reflect a high value. Wood, not so much. And so, that's how it distinguishes between the marbles and then it'll move this slider on the bottom which has three compartments, one for each kind, and that's how it works. So, we can demo it real quick. One sec. So, you start it and you press the start button. It does an auto calibration here. Oh, not yet. Sorry. Started it too early. Put the marbles in first. Into the hopper. Now, we press the start button and it does the auto calibration, so our little cart there is in the same position every time. You don't have to reset it to a new spot. And then it just goes through this sequence and measures every marble.
It's kinda hard to see, it's, one of the things that I like about their version of this particular, or their solution to this project is, I don't know if y'all know this about high school boys and high school engineering students in general, but they love to overcomplicate things. And so, normally this project for a lot of my students is anywhere from three to five times larger than this, with a whole lot more sensors and a whole lot more motors and servos. And they did this with what, three motors, four motors?
Four motors.
Four motors and one sensor and it works just almost every time. I've thrown them some curveballs, we've put rusty metal balls in there and it, because you'd think that they would come pretty close to being the same as the wooden balls and it sorts them. So, I really have a lot of admiration. Normally, the other hard thing usually about this is getting it to feed just one marble at a time. Doesn't sound like it'd be a hard thing to do, but that's the big stumbling block. It has been in the seven years I've taught this project and they did it with three screws, more or less, to form a little gate, which I, you know, I don't know if y'all can see that or not. But normally, that's a much more elaborate solution, but it's, it's a pretty cool thing and a lot of work went into it. They built it, coded it, designed it, but y'all can see the design brief and then the rubric, how we, or how I grade these, you go through and I'm sorry for the small print, but I'm a teacher. So, you know, we gotta conserve paper. But, you know, we get really nitpicky on the solution, not only that, but the documentation, how it's prepared and how it's presented in class. So, I would say that they're gonna stick around and demo this for you again at the end, but it's a school night, so.
So, look, Mr. Cooper, what about the accuracy level? Did it sort it correctly? Is it 100% or?
I can take a look.
Yeah, we got glass, wood and metal and it's, it's, it's spot on. And then look, before I brought them down here to show this to y'all, we tested this under about every light condition possible. I had them in a storage room, in my, in a closet, in my room with the lights out, to make sure it worked.
Absolutely. Let's give a round of applause.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank y'all. This has been terrific.
So, they got 100?
100, man. That's crazy, though.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Prattville Intermediate School, the class, the class school of this program, the house program. Dr. Josea Addison, please come up, please. And I'll let him introduce his teachers, but a little bit about Dr. Addison. Dr. Addison has worked as an assistant principal at Prattville High School for five years. He's also, has been at Prattville Intermediate School for five years. Last week, Ms. Crockett and one of our state board members, Dr. Chestnut, visited his school and three other schools and she was really pleased with the visit and really enjoyed the visit at Prattville Intermediate. Dr. Addison?
Board Chairman, it's Dr. Board Members. Dr. Boyd, thank you. Good evening, everybody. For those of you that know me, you've heard this before and if you don't know me, you'll hear it for the first time tonight. You have officially met the gentleman that has the best job on the planet. This is our house committee and each of these ladies will introduce themselves and tell you what they teach.
I am Shayla Pinky-Petway. I am a sixth grade science and history teacher.
I'm Kathleen Dottry and I teach fifth grade math and science.
I'm Kim Tucker. I teach fifth grade math and science.
I'm Kim Carpenter and I teach sixth grade math and history.
I'm Graeme Stringer. I teach sixth grade reading and history.
I'm Taylor Moore. I teach sixth grade reading and history.
I'm Katie Ball. I teach fifth grade reading and language arts.
I'm Cassie Argo and I teach fifth grade math and science.
Ron Clark says hire people who are smarter than you. They will make you look good. And there you see, Mrs. Carpenter will say a few words about the house system.
Yes, I sure will. My pleasure.
First of all, I would like to just applaud, we spent hours this summer taking something that was really good and trying to turn it into something even better for the kids. And the ladies that are up here take time out of their everyday lives with their own families and kids and everything else to dedicate it to our children at school. And so, the basis or the purpose of our house program is really to help push our learners to become future leaders. And the power and success of our house program falls back on the idea that our school isn't just about academics. This program isn't about consequences or discipline and it's not about prizes or rewards. Our house system gives students a space where they belong and it gives them the power to make good choices towards a common goal. It provides our students with exposure to the leadership skills that they need in the present and also in the future. Most importantly, it builds a sense of community in our school and it truly makes it feel like we are one big family.
For houses.
One family.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. Regarding this particular program, there were 208 nominations across the state and 32 schools were selected and Prattville Intermediate is one of those schools. Thank you, Dr. Addison and staff, a job well done.
Yep, no, I'm just saying, awesome job, good job. My kids have been a part of that system and it's really, really great. If you have the opportunity to look up Ron Clark Academy and look into this, to the program a little bit more, I encourage you to do that and look at their Facebook pages. They have a lot of fun in their houses, so it's a really great program and I'm proud to be a part of that.
Thank you. Item G, consider for approval, consent agenda. I recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented, that is G1 through 10.
Okay, board members, can I please get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to accept.
A second?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion about the items on the consent agenda? No? Okay, all in favor to approve the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. Okay, consent agenda has been approved.
Next item is item H, consider for approval. I recommend approval of the personnel report as presented.
Okay, board members, under the recommendation of the superintendent, can I please get a motion to accept the personnel action?
I make a motion to accept the personnel action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion about the personnel report? No? Okay, all in favor to accept the personnel report as recommended by the superintendent, please raise your right hand. Okay, personnel report has been approved.
I recommend approval of the budget amendment as presented.
Okay, board members, under the recommendation of the superintendent, can I please get a motion to accept the budget amendment?
I make a motion to accept.
Second? Second, okay. Is there any discussion about the budget amendment?
Yes, ma'am. Can we ask Ms. Poe to come up and present some information, please?
Absolutely, please. Come on up, Ms. Poe.
Good evening. As required, we are required to do one budget amendment a year. The importance of this budget amendment is to put in our carryover that we received from federal funds from the prior year. It's also to update our beginning fund balances and to record any new funding that we've received. In your board packets, you've got a summary sheet of the adjustments that we made. We had to adjust the beginning fund balances for each of our funds to make them agree and match with what our year-end financials were approved as by the State Department. So, our original beginning fund balance that was estimated was at 21 million, but our, but our beginning fund balance after financials were approved by the state was 27 million. So, we had that adjustment. We have several new areas of new funding in the general fund, national board certified teacher, we have five SPED high needs grants that we've added and the cybersecurity grant. So, those were the adjustments that were made in the general fund. Therefore, adjusting our general fund ending predicted fund balance from 23.6 million to, from, to 26.5. So, from 23.6 to 26.5 is the projected ending fund balance for general fund. In the special revenue, the adjustments that we made were to bring over all the budget carryover from '22, which included all the ESAR and COVID funding sources as well. We did receive one new funding adjustment and that is the JAG program and so that is in there as well. And then once again, we did the fund balance beginning adjustments as we needed to do. And we've done those beginning fund balance adjustments also in our capital projects and our expendable trust, which is our local school area. And those other areas, there were no new funding in there. So, what it looks like now is that our total budgeted ending fund balance, all funds predicted for the end of the fiscal year '23 would be $43.6 million. Are there any questions about this amended budget? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poe. Okay, all in favor of accepting the budget amendment as recommended by the superintendent, please raise your right hand. Okay, budget amendment has been approved. Okay, so before Dr. Boyd gives his report, I would like to take this opportunity to officially open up the search for our next superintendent. First and foremost, we would like to offer the position to Dr. Boyd. So, at this time, Dr. Boyd, would you be interested in being ACBOE's superintendent?
I really, really appreciate the offer. I was retired, I wanna go back into retirement after this stint here, but I'll say this, whoever's the next superintendent will be a lucky person. You guys are an awesome board, we have really, really good people, good parents to work with, outstanding senior staff, but I really, I'm not ready to get into it again. Appreciate the offer, so, but thank you.
Awesome. Well, we thank you for all your hard work and endless hours that you have poured into our system over the last few weeks. So, you've sat in this position long enough to know the type of person that ACBOE needs, so we would like to ask your help in searching for our next superintendent. So, would you be so gracious in assisting us in finding our next superintendent?
Absolutely.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you very much, we really appreciate that. So, board members, at this time.
Can I say something? Yes, thank you for coming out of retirement and coming to hang out with us. It has meant the world to us, it's a brand new board to have your leadership and, and how wonderful, thank y'all for coming and supporting Dr. Boyd and for you supporting them and being such, loving our county as much as we do.
You're an awesome team, this is a great place to be. I mean that.
Thank you, thank you. We think it is. Okay, so board members, can I please get a motion to accept Dr. Boyd as the lead in our superintendent search?
So moved.
Okay, a second, a second. Okay, is there any discussion about Dr. Boyd being our lead? Okay, so all in favor of appointing Dr. Boyd as the lead in our superintendent search, will you please raise your right hand? Okay, please note the vote of the board members in appointing Dr. Boyd as the lead for our superintendent search. So, we look forward to what you have and we look forward to starting this adventure for all of us, so we are very excited. So, thank you, Dr. Boyd.
So, that being said, tomorrow by 12 o'clock, I'll have a dry flyer for you of the posting and if you could give me some feedback before, well, I'll have it to you by 10 o'clock in the morning. If you give me some feedback as soon as you can, I'll go ahead and share it with WSB and also the State Superintendent Association.
Awesome, yes, sir. We'll be looking for that, thank you. Okay, and we are now ready for your superintendent's report, sir.
Yes, ma'am. So, first thing I would like to share with you all is the new Purple Star schools that we have in Otaga County. I'm really, really proud to share with you the resolution that was provided to our district by Dr. Mackey, our state superintendent. So, we have several new schools on board that include Marbury High School, Prattville Elementary School, Prattville Intermediate School, Prattville Kindergarten School and Prattville Primary. We also, already have some schools that are part of this particular program. It includes Daniel Pratt Elementary, Prattville Junior High and Prattville High School. So, we have a total of eight schools in our district that fall in this particular category. Special appreciation goes out to Ms. Catherine Ganster, she's sitting out right over there, she works with the A's on office, she did not want to be recognized, but we truly appreciate everything you do. Can you please stand? Let's give her a round of applause.
I just wanna thank you guys for being a district that does support military families. I am a military family, my kids went through Otaga, they went to Prattville High School and we are becoming Prattvillians as we end up retirement. So, again, just thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you, thank you for being involved and helping us accomplish all of that. That's really great, that's a lot of schools.
It is.
That's a great accomplishment.
Next item on the agenda is Prattville High School Coach DeBose named advertiser coach of the year. In her second season, this Erica DeBose led the Prattville High School Girls varsity basketball team to a 78 final four appearance with a 25 and 5 record. This is, this year's final four appearance was only the second in program history, so let's give her. Also, Jaden Nixon, Otaga Field's six foot four inch guard, was named the Alabama Sports Writers Association 1A Basketball Player of the Year. Congratulations to Jaden. And he also was the Montgomery Advertiser 2023 All Metro Boys Basketball. And he also was the Montgomery Advertiser 2023 All-Metro Boys Basketball Team selection. So let's move on to undefeated seasons. Prattville High School's freshman boy, Socrates, made up of only Prattville Junior High School students, finished this season undefeated with a record of 13-0, allowing only eight goals he scored on them during their entire season. The principal, Ms. Skinner, is here of those students who are playing with the high school team. Also, Prattville Junior High's girl golf team wrapped up a perfect season recently with an undefeated record of 7-0, averaging 24-stroke lead over this year's season competition. Impressive, let's give them a round of applause. Billingsley School is home to the four states' first Chief Science Officer. Chief Science Officer is a student in grade six to 12, interested in technology, innovation, and leadership, passionate about impacting their school and community. The new STEM initiative is the first of its kind that seeks to inspire students and community STEM awareness and encourage the pursuit of STEM education and careers in Alabama and across the country. All-school CSO recently attended the Program's Leadership Training Institute to network, receive leadership training, and work as a collective cabinet to input, to provide input and ideas to STEM leaders across this area of the state. Let's give our students a round of applause for that accomplishment. Grace Downey, a Prattville High School senior, was named Prattville's YMCA 2023 Willis Bradford Christian Leadership Award for her Christian leadership at school and in the community. She accepted the award just hours after having knee surgery to repair an injury that cut her soccer season short. So let's give Grace a round of applause. The Prattville High School Coral Company performed at NASCAR race. This was at the, was, this was done, they were there to perform the National Anthem before NASCAR's General Tire 200 ARCA Series race had the fame Talladega Speedway. This took place on April the 22nd while we were on our retreat, I actually played it for our board member stand. So let's give them a round of applause for that. So Auburn University Dual Enrollment Program, Otaga County Schools has recently entered a dual enrollment agreement with Auburn University and their first Auburn initiative. This program offers students who have completed the ninth grade with a high school GPA 3.0 or higher the opportunity to earn up to 24 dual enrollment credits and automatic admission after graduating from high school. Additionally, Auburn is also offering tuition waivers for students who show financial need. This process and this, this agreement was orchestrated by Dr. Jacob Holloway at the central office, so let's give him and this partnership a great round of applause. It has the potential to benefit many students.
Absolutely.
So that being said, we're gonna move on to a special presentation with the slide, and I believe that Ms. Atchison is up there, not quite yet. There we go, good. So this is a real special initiative that we should be very proud of. We hear time and time, the principal at the Career Tech Center has worked with his staff to start this particular program. We have several individuals who are part of this particular program. Really, really, really awesome program. Ms. Rebecca Thomas and I were at the program, and she took lots of good pictures and made this, this, this slide for us here, but we're really, really happy with the fact that we have young individuals in our high schools who are ready to go out in the teacher field to replace the teachers who are now retiring. So thank you, Mr. Dunn, and everything you do with that particular program. So we were starting lots of different initiatives there. One of the ones is our new strategic plan, and we realized that in order to have a strategic plan, you have to have a good current motto. So there were many good choices, about six or seven of them that we thought were really, really good, but didn't know which one was the best, so I had my favorites, someone else has his favorite, her favorite, and so forth, so instead of duking it out, we decided to, hey, let's just go ahead and have some type of contest. And of course, mine did not win, but there were 700, 871 votes, 33 additional write-ins, and now we're gonna do the great reveal.
Yours didn't win either, huh? Oh!
All right, this is it. Equip, engage, excel. That's what we wanna do. We wanna make sure that our students are equipped with the necessary skills to succeed. We wanna make sure that they engage in every opportunity that comes their way, and we want them to be the best in the varieties that Otaga County and the state of Alabama has to offer. And that's why we will have excel as the last word there.
Awesome. I was very excited for that, I regretted.
Could yours win?
No, it did not, but I did a write-in. But I love it, I like it. Good job.
So for, Madam Board President, board members, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Boyd. That was very great. I love seeing our kids present up here and that we get the opportunity to see all of these great things that are happening within the walls of Otaga County. It makes me happy that we can showcase that in front of everybody and show you guys that, you know, not just Prattville High School, but Billingsley, and Otaga, and Marbury, all of the great things that are happening district-wide. So thank you so much for bringing that to us, and we hope that that continues. Okay, is there anything any other board member would like to add before we adjourn?
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Um, this last week, on May 4th, we lost a great educator in Otaga County, Mr. Paul Meigs, who had become a resident up in Decatur. But he was an educator for 32 years, 21 of those years were here with the ACBOE. He survived by his wife for 55 years, Ms. Barbara, son Joey, and daughters Kathy and, Kathy and Patty. So I just wanted to make mention of that, and I know there's probably some out here that, that know Mr. Meigs and his family, and he was a great fellow, so he will be missed.
Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Okay, well, this concludes all of our business for today, so can I please get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, here's a second. Okay, all in favor of adjourned in this meeting, please raise your right hand. Okay, meeting is adjourned.